Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and resume with our hearings and pick up where we left off. And now we're out of recess and we have Chris Ryer, Director of Planning, that's going to give your presentation, introduce your staff, and we'll take it from there.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and members of the council of a brief opening statement. Then I'd like to introduce our team and then we'll walk through a PowerPoint. So this is my sixth and last budget hearing as your planning director, and I wanted to summarize what we've accomplished this year and what we see coming in fiscal year 26. You may remember, we presented the capital budget last week, so this will be on the operating budget. Last year, the goals we presented to you for our department are to complete the rebuilding of the department's administrative capacity, to enable its ability to obtain federal, state, and private philanthropic dollars, to expand our work in community development, historic preservation, sustainability, and food policy, and to take advantage of a successful recruiting effort to retain, train, and expand our staff through staff development, enrichment, and professional activities. And I think it's fair to say that we've accomplished those goals. The department is almost fully staffed, and I think we are at a position where everyone is now settled into positions and has a good handle on their position. So first, for this year, the comprehensive plan is completed. As you know, state law requires the comprehensive plan to be completed by the fourth year after the census. And I hope you all remember the 2020 census, remember that during a pandemic when the president changed the end of the census three times, including cutting off the last two months of it? But one thing I'd like to highlight for this hearing, that the comp plan proposed, we'll talk about in Service 761 this year, an overhaul of our land use process, a process that we hope is designed to help Baltimore grow again and be both predictable and transparent. It enables the city, the council, and the communities to vision land use changes in their community with new proactive tools. Secondly, I'm proud of the economic support that the department has developed for some of our most distressed communities. As you know, I come from a community development background, and I'm happy to say that the neighborhood subcabinet is functioning very highly in support of the community development strategy. But in addition to that, the Department of Planning has implemented programming directly in support of our neighborhoods. And I'll give some examples. A direct descendant of the Green Network Plan, the Clean Core Program, has stepped into the breach created by the COVID epidemic by directly intervening in dozens of neighborhoods where trash, debris, and vacancy overwhelmed Department of Public Works, and the city, and its citizens during the pandemic. Today, Clean Core employees from these neighborhoods are cleaning their alleys, mowing vacant lots, and working directly with the neighborhood leaders in more than 50% of the neighborhoods that have experienced population loss. We also distribute over $10 million in two dozen neighborhoods impacted by the racetrack and the casino. We've developed transparent and accountable programs that distribute these funds directly to community organizations that then provide a direct impact on their communities. We've distributed over $5.5 million in the past two years for food security and urban agriculture throughout our neighborhoods, and several million more in environmental support, such as tree plantings and shoreline restoration. Finally, to go back to the Green Network Plan, we have identified $7 million to support the acquisition, design, and construction of the Green Network Trail. Next year, in addition to the changes in land use plan identified in the comp plan, we're eagerly accepting the move of the zoning administrator's office from Department of Housing and Community Development into the Department of Planning. I think this will place the team that writes the zoning code, Service 761, with the team that interprets the zoning code, integrating the management of land use into one department, just as we hope the new permitting system comes online. Beginning this year, planning staff will be able to receive feedback directly from the zoning administrator's office on changes and challenges in administering the code, and that will enable Baltimore to become more nimble and more responsive as we chart a path towards growth. So I have some slides to show today and can answer any questions specific to the services afterwards. If I may, I'd like to introduce our team here today, starting with Services Director Nicole Stewart. I want to pass it to our Chief Financial Officer Jamie Kramer. You guys want to introduce yourselves? I don't have to introduce. Tristan, want to introduce yourself?
Tristan Codington, Clean Core Operations Director.
Got it. We'll jump over here to Jeff.
Jeffrey Veal, zoning administrator.
Good afternoon, Eric T. Hill, Urban Design.
Chad Hayes, Director of the Community Planning Division.
Sarah Parnell, Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis.
Taylor Fave, Chief of Food Policy and Planning.
Good afternoon, Avery Richardson, Director of the Office of Sustainability.
Eric Holcomb, CHAP.
And a couple more in the back here. Lauren?
Hi, Lauren Shizik, the CHAP.
Chris?
Chris Firehop, Casino Local Impact Fund Program Manager.
Thank you.
Kira McDonald, Global Impact Day Program Manager.
Okay, thank you. I'll start through the presentation if I can get this to work. Let me skip the page. Apologize for the fuzziness. Org chart standard, these are, we were six services, we are now seven services. The zoning administrator will head up an office of seven positions within the Department of Planning, will be a separate service, and will be a separate division within the Department of Planning. Little overview issues, our mission, build Baltimore as a diverse, sustainable, and thriving city of neighborhoods, and as the economic and cultural driver for the region. These are our three primary goals for the fiscal year, for 26 fiscal years. So you all heard a lot last week about the capital budgeting process, so we fully intend to see that through to the end, to complete the improvements we're making to that process by the end of fiscal year 26. To implement, begin to implement the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, you're going to hear a lot about land use process reform with that goal, and to integrate the zoning administrator's office into the department. I'll go through our services real briefly. Services 761, Development Oversight. This is the Land Use and Urban Design Division of the department that supports the Planning Commission. That is their primary role, so they process major development projects through the city process. It includes site plan review, design review, subdivisions, all the major development reviews that the department manages. Our two performance measures have to do with scheduling things for the Planning Commission quickly, and scheduling things for UDAP quickly, and historically, we've met this performance measure. Second service is the CHAP Division, essentially. There is a somewhat belated highlight here. You may remember during the pandemic, and I think you can see it here, we missed our target rather substantially for a couple of years. Happy to say, we're back above, we're beating our target in fiscal year 25. But to address that, there was staff turnover, and we transferred a supervisor position from another division into the CHAP Division to beef up its staff. That's only reflected in the FY26 budget, although it happened a couple of years ago. The performance measures, to summarize them, are reviews of tax credit applications within 30 days, and what we call ATP's Authorization to Proceed. That's essentially a sign-off on a design plan. Next service is a very large one. I believe it is the largest, Comprehensive Planning and Resource Management. So in this service lives all the community planning work. I think we're up to 15 community planners now, as well as the capital budgeting group, and the GIS group also. So there's a lot of staff in this service. These are difficult performance measures. When you think about working with communities, how do you do that? How do you count that? So we've been working with this for a number of years, essentially map requests we turn around virtually instantly. And then the more challenging one is the urban renewal permits. So we look for a three-day turnaround with them. With the new permitting system, there are challenges where the planners aren't seeing the permit in the system. They don't see the permit until somebody calls and complains, and then we're able to go in and rectify the situation. So I know we're working hard with the HCD and the mayor's office to fix that. Also in this service lives the Green Network Plan and the Clean Core Program, and that is responsible for some of the staff increases lately. Up 765 is also two, yeah. Planning for a Sustainable Baltimore includes the entire Sustainability Division and the entire Food Policy Division. Again, these performance measures have been challenging. As you can imagine, some climate issues don't change very quickly. They don't change much from year to year. So we've wrestled with revising these, and there have been revisions recently to this, not in this year, but in the year before. Right now, we talk about the number of people engaged in sustainability activities. Those numbers are real. Our target is 78,000 people through our various outreach efforts. The percentage of sustainability plan strategies that have advanced. So we look at that. The Sustainability Plan has, I don't have the number in front of me, but many, many strategies, and not all of them move at the same pace. And then the third one is what we call our Healthy Food Priority Area Funds, which is a grant program I mentioned in my opening remarks, and distributing that to our food security partners. So those are the performance measures in Sustainable Baltimore. The Administration Division, so I mentioned, last year, we really focused on beefing this up. So you've met the two managers of the Racetrack and Casino Funds. We have a Contracts Administrator in there. We have a new fiscal officer. We've really beefed up our administrative infrastructure in the last year to year and a half. So that's been the sort of major focus and accomplishment of that division. And then finally, the Office of Zoning Administrator. So this is a new service, right? It didn't exist because it came out of a larger service within the Department of Housing and Community Development. So Jeff Veal, our zoning administrator, has worked to put together performance measures for this, and one is the percentage of complete applications reviewed within 30 days, and the second is the percentage of complete appeals referred within 30 days. So I'm sure you'll have questions about this, but I want to stress that within the permit system, the thousands or tens of thousands of permits that come through the city every year, every single one of them goes through the zoning administrator's office. It's the only touchpoint in the permit system where every single one goes through. They may or may not review it, but they look at it. So that's unique to the zoning administrator office, and we're hoping that putting our teams together will improve that flow by improving the process in a continuous way. So that's the end of my presentation today. Again, I'm available for questions, and we also have all the division chiefs here to answer them. We also have put together a goal statement or goals for each of the services, if you're interested in that.
Thank you, Mr. Director, and you may have a seat if you'd like, as we do our questioning. And I just want to thank you and your team for all the work that you continue to do for this city. Basically, this is, your department is the start of many things that the agencies are charged to do for all of our neighborhoods. Just bringing, you know, our city is going through a big revitalization in many neighborhoods. And I know firsthand that you have designated certain committees to do certain things, like Northwest Baltimore, there's the Lynx Program that brings those Northwest neighborhoods together. We have organizations that are charged to bring those communities together around the revitalization of Drew Hill Park. Those are just some examples of some of the hard work that you have to do, and as we're moving forward and going through the process of making the Office of the Administrator a part of planning, because zoning is a very important part of this. So I'll just go ahead into my question, and I just want to let the council know that save your questions for CHAP, in a sense, because we do have 30 minutes allotted after this just for CHAPs, which is the Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation, so we can hold those questions for that particular piece. But I'll go ahead and start my question. You know, we had a very intense session with the Department of Transportation, which is also, you know, really involved in infrastructure and just changing things like traffic calming and trying to update with emergencies and so on. And I know your office also works and tries to help. You're in sync with the state in a sense. And as far as transportation, are there any initiatives that you are working to merge initiatives with the state and the city with public transportation?
Great question. There are. I think I'll start with what we think is the most significant, that where our agency, which manages land use, is working with our Department of Transportation, but more importantly, the Maryland Department of Transportation, whether it be the Secretary's Office, or the MTA, or both. And the mutual goal here is to maximize the interface between the transit system and the land use pattern, so to maximize development around transit investments, for example. The city has by far the largest concentration of transit investments in the state. That does not include Washington DC, but of all the jurisdictions in the state, the city has the most, meaning that we have at least 30, maybe 40 opportunities to work with the state to sort of marry that land use pattern with the transit investment. Typically, historically, it's been focused on rail systems, but in the last few years, we've expanded into sort of major bus line investments also. And as you all know, there's a lot of planning going on around the future red line. So I would say there are regular meetings now between the State Department of Transportation, the City Department of Transportation, and City Planning Department, where we are trying to figure out how to prioritize, looking at all these opportunities sort of one by one. Everyone's got a different agenda. The State Department of Transportation's agenda is to look at locations where they own property that they can actually offer for development. The City Department of Transportation's really looking at safety data, where there are a lot of accidents or pedestrian injuries, those kinds of things, and our role is to look at the land use side of things. So I think that's probably the looking forward. That's something that's going to be a two- or three-year process to get through all those, figure out what we do, when, what the priorities are, where we need extra resources, et cetera.
Thank you for that answer. And we have, my colleagues have questions as well, so we're going to go ahead and get into their questions and start with Councilman Gray.
Thank you, and thank you to the Department of Planning for all the work that you guys do with sustainability. You guys have often been a critical resource for us, for my office, when we reach out with a variety of things, and so I definitely appreciate your partnership. I wanted to touch base about community associations. I know we've had this conversation, I've had this conversation with you guys before, and I just wanted to see if you wanted to share just like some outcomes of our conversations. And so, the Department of Planning maintains a registry of the community associations across our city. Are there any proposals within this FY26 budget to develop clear standards, best practices, or training programs to help professionalize our community associations, ensuring that they're more effectively equipped to participate and influence planning and development decisions across the city? And I ask this because my predecessor and I have both reached out at different times, asking for some type of like standards and norms. Many of our community associations do a really great job at representing, sorry, many of our community associations do a really amazing job advocating and being a representation of the community, but within that, we definitely have sometimes a few of them that seem like they are louder than maybe what the folks that show up to their meetings, and sometimes they're able to influence outcomes for decisions in communities when the representation that they are claiming to have does not directly translate to representation that they are actually speaking for. So could you just talk about that a little bit, please?
Sure, certainly. And I'll begin, and the Director of Community Planning and Revitalization, Chad Hayes, is also here, can add things. It's a great question. Let me roll back a few years to talk about what we've been doing. So first of all, since its inception, I think in the 60s is when the Community Association Directory started, it's been a self-regulated document, and the basic reason for that is trying to figure out where to draw the line as a policeman or as a manager of the Community Association Directory. So since the 60s, cities like Washington and New York have really created a whole nother level of government underneath the council, and it's governed by the Board of Elections, so it's governed by law. We have, for whatever reason, not chosen to do that in Baltimore, so we have an inherently informal system. But the Councilman brings up a great point. People, first of all, people would register on it, so it's self-registering, and never leave. And they might have stopped having meetings or even interacting in their community five years ago, but they're still showing up in the Community Association Directory. Also, there are self-appointed leaders that, you know, I'm elected, I'm a leader of one. And again, when you're looking at equity, when you're looking at fairness, how do you deal with those kinds of things? So during COVID, we instituted a couple of major improvements. One is you have to reregister every year, or you get dropped, essentially. But two, we started asking for a lot more detail on your association. So we asked, who's on your board? What's the makeup, the demographic makeup of your board? When are your elections? How do you communicate with your, do you have a newsletter? Do you have a website or a Facebook page? How do we know that what we say to you, you being council people or planners, gets out to the neighborhood? Like, how do we know that you're communicating with other people? So we've added this. The result of that is we went from eight or 900 registered associations down to 200 or 300. Now, right now, if you don't fill in information about your board, or your meeting dates, or all that, you stay in the system as long as you re-enroll every year. So what we're looking at is whether, you know, when you fill out your form to the IRS or whatever, and you don't fill out the ZIP code, you can't go on, right? That stops you there. So whether there are fields where that would be an appropriate innovation or addition to the process, that's what we're looking at right now.
Thank you, and I appreciate just the conversations we've had, because I think it's really important for anyone who lives in a particular community to be able to put that name of that community in there, find the association, but also find the meeting dates, what the bylaws are, when they meet, when was the last election, meeting notes, if possible. Sometimes that could be, you know, that's kind of cumbersome depending on how many times they meet. But that type of information is really essential for people. One, to figure out what's going on. But secondly, I strongly believe that if anyone is going to have that much of an influence in outcomes, that everyone has to have some type of transparency. As an elected official, we have to have transparency on the way that we do things, and so these folks are putting in a lot of hours. A lot of them are putting in a lot of hours, volunteer, they're not getting paid. And I want to make sure that we're protecting those folks, the folks that are actually out here doing the work, from people that can just put their name, like you said, as a community association of one without any type of information, but be able to, and up to recently, DPW changed it, you know, have roll-off carts at their disposal, and just any of the other amenities that come with being a community association. We want to make sure that there's some type of standards and practice to protect the ones that are actually doing the work. So I appreciate that.
I did neglect, you mentioned trainings, which is a really good question. In recent years, being the last five or so years, the department has really focused on building up and sort of fleshing out the Planning Academy. It is a major piece of our equity strategy. The Planning Academy is designed to reach people that might not normally be included in their community association or active in their neighborhood, but to kind of reach beyond that cluster of people and find people that actually really are interested in what we want to do. and find people that actually really are interested in what we want to do and then give them the skills through the academy to participate in those kinds of discussions. I do know, I've been around long enough to know CPA did a lot of trainings for community organizations. And I'm not sure capacity-wise, we're there yet, but that might be a longer conversation.
Yes, and I'm happy that you highlighted that because that is something that's very important. I think as a graduate of the Planning Academy, and I think we have one other person in my office, my Chief of Staff, who also attended the Planning Academy. One, you learn, you learn things. But secondly, it's always interesting to see community members learn things and that aha pops in their head and they realize, you know, the effective way to advocate for their communities. And I just would love and will continue to work and push to make sure that we have those types of trainings for our community associations so they learn how to write grants, so they learn how to, so they know when certain opportunities are available, so they know of certain programs. A lot of the times-
Say it again.
Yeah, how to run a meeting effectively, right? Because those are really, really important when we talk about how to make sure that we are getting funding into neighborhoods. And you see the articles with the Maryland Graph of Open Space and the people that had access to it were the people who knew about it. And there were so many other people in Baltimore City and the butterfly that had no idea about this. And so making sure that we are opening up levels of information for people so they know exactly where to go and what to do and how to advocate for themselves is really going to help this city continue to push forward. So I do thank you and will, and look forward to continuing to work with you on that. I have just one more question, sorry VP. So this is for the Historic Preservation Review. Oh, sorry, yeah, okay. Yep, yeah, sorry. So, but next question. Given the department's role in comprehensive planning, how does the FY26 budget support community engagement efforts, especially in underserved or underrepresented areas? Are there any new initiatives for public outreach, workshops, or direct communication input in new or future planning decisions? Kind of goes along with the last question.
Let me start with the, with the comp plan. There'll probably be more discussion about that today. In the comp plan, we've proposed a new structure for land use change. The state law requires you to meet one of three criteria to change a land use in Maryland. It's called the Mistake Change or Comprehensive Plan Ruling. The land use, the zoning code itself, I'm sorry, was comprehensively overhauled in 2017. It was a five-year effort, hadn't been done since the 1970s. So it became very hard to say that there had been a substantial change in a neighborhood or on a property. And so meeting that standard became very difficult after the Transform Baltimore process. So we were getting, we were certainly willing to deal with mistakes and we do that on a regular basis. But we were looking for a better way to manage the comprehensive planning aspect of state law. And within the comp plan, we made several proposals. One, for the first time, for the first time with this intention in mind, we developed a land use plan for the city akin to what every, every other jurisdiction in the state already has. What is sort of a generalized application of the zoning code, much less specific. We then proposed a couple of other pilots, I guess I'll call them. One, we would update this land use map every four years in the second year of your term. So that means next year will be the second year of your term and we will go through a process of revising the land use plan. If, if the applicant, the land, the property owner wants to change their zoning and it's in accordance with the land use plan, then it's a much simpler process for them. We're also exploring, looking within each year, clustering zoning applications and looking them, looking at them as a group to see where that line, what that, how do we define comprehensive planning in an annual cycle? We're just trying that this year for the, for the first time. To get to, get to your question. The whole idea behind this is that it's more transparent and it's more predictable. I'm asking for forgiveness in the, in the beginning here because we'll be working through things we're not really, we've never tried before. But I hope when we settle down through some practice that the citizens will able to, be able to understand this, won't need a zoning attorney all the time to affect change in their neighborhood, and will be able, will begin to institutionalize this process in the, in the city of Baltimore.
Absolutely. But I think my question is more of, when will the Edgewood's and the Emerson Village people even know this is a thing? Like, what are we doing about educating them about the process in general? Once again, to me, it's an equity issue because the same people show up to these meetings to make the changes for their, and advocate for their communities. And I can stand in front of a community association and tell them about this, but I'm not the subject matter expert. And so when we start to get into the minutia, I can't answer those questions. And so people don't know how important this is. And this is really important. So I just want to know, like, what commitments are you guys going to make to make sure that people want to know about it? And, you know, if they show up, you know, this is, that's, that's always the thing, whether people want to show up. But if we, if we explain to them what this is and the true power in, of this and educating them on what they can do, I think you would see more participation across the city and not just the same pockets of the city.
Okay, Assistant Director Stewart will answer that.
Sure, and good afternoon, everyone. Assistant Director Nicole Stewart, I missed my cue earlier. So for the comprehensive plan, what we did this year is actually outline what we've been calling Comprehensive Plan Implementation. So there are a couple of things we're doing around engagement. So all of the things that Director, right, are outlined that we're, that were introduced as a part of the comp plan. We're building out an engagement strategy to make sure that folks are aware of what those new processes are. In addition, we've included in our implementation plan for us to create a comp plan advisory board that would further engage our community residents around the process. We have also outlined a number of, you know, the comp plan is a big document, a number of documents or smaller ways to communicate about what's in it so that it's not so dense. And so we've talked about digital dashboards. We talked about snippets with some of the, that are snippets of specific information that we are breaking down in order, in trying to identify creative ways in order to be able to get the information out about what is in, what is currently in the comprehensive plan. But then also that it is a living process that's not just focused on throughout, during that one period after the census when we are producing document itself.
And if I could add, I mean, the department as a whole is, has a, has an equity action plan that we update every year. And so I believe that we have the tools to do what you're saying. But we'd love to work with you to actually put together the plan. We have a, an equity position, we have a comms position. We've never had both of those before. We have an idea that we need to communicate. So I think it's a very good question and we could work with you all going forward to figure out that comms strategy.
Thank you, I look forward to doing that. And my only suggestion would just be, you should start throwing out that idea now. Having a pre-meeting before the meeting because we all know that when people don't understand something, the first meeting is just all questions and there, no one's willing to learn because they have questions. And so we have a pre-meeting to get the questions out the way, then the meeting, so folks can actually know exactly what the objectives are and go right into it. And any way that you can, you can tap into me or any of my colleagues, I'm sure we'd be willing to help move this process along. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Gray. And before we move to the next person, just want to recognize Councilman Bullock has joined us. Also, he serves as the Council Representative on the Planning Commission. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director, for your years of service, as I said before in another hearing, and your vision for, you know, moving the Planning Department to the next level. I have a few questions. The first is, I'll start with the Clean Core program. It was a brainchild of people in my district, so I am going to defend it to the hilt. And I want to make sure that since all of those positions were ARPA-funded, which is consistent with my other line of questioning to every agency, how are we going to make sure that beyond ARPA, that Clean Core is still working? And I know that we've actually seen successes. I know in my district, we've seen not just that, you know, it's working on the ground, but also DPW has hired from that cohort, which was exactly the point of the, of the program. So we do not want it to go away in my district. So what's the, what's the plan?
So this keeps Assistant Director Stewart up at night, so I'm going to let her start on an answer.
Sure, so I thank you for your support, Councilwoman Ramos. Yes, Clean Core has been a success over the past two and a half years now. We've completed over thirty-four thousand services. We've expanded to cover forty-two neighborhoods within Baltimore City. And I'll just take a point of personal privilege to say we were, we convened a group of those community leaders last night. There were about, I don't know, forty to fifty people. We rolled out what we've been calling the Clean Community Challenge, providing small grants for capacity building amongst community residents in our neighborhoods to complete beautification and cleaning projects over the summer. And we kicked that meeting off last night and it was a great time. So in terms of the sustainability of the program, so we are currently funded through June 2026 for the program with ARPA funds as well as other funds that our active grantees have been able to raise and in partnership with us. And so they have been pursuing contracts, grant dollars, et cetera, in partnership to continue with Clean Core. And we've structured that in a way that has allowed us to act. Clean Core was supposed to be over in January 2025. So all of the strategic shifts that we've made over the past year have allowed us to continue beyond what was the intended original end date. However, beyond 2026, we are still having conversations. We have some plans in terms of outreach to our philanthropic partners to continue Clean Core. We are also continuing to have conversations with the administration about the future of Clean Core. As of yet, there are no definitive, it's not anyone's budget as of yet. But we are definitely hoping to continue to have those conversations with you, other council members, as well as the administration and our philanthropic partners and to pursue other grant dollars as well to continue the program.
Yes, we have to do that. So let's continue to work together on that. It's not, obviously by the end of, by this time next fiscal year, we need to have a solution and it needs to be in the budget, which means we have to have a conversation as soon as this budget passes for next year. It's, it's really an important, it's been very important for my district. And I think that many of my colleagues can say, can say the same thing. And I appreciate Director and Assistant Director and your whole team for really even coming up with this. Well, we came up with it in my district. You ran with it and spread it around, and so I'm, I'm grateful for that. So thank you. Turning a little bit to a completely different subject is the, Director, you had mentioned the sort of changes you're making through that we voted on the comprehensive plan. I will say, I voted against the comprehensive plan. And I voted against it because I believe that the input on the land use map was not as comprehensive as it should have been, particularly with the Latino community. I think there were just a couple of meetings instead of much more comprehensive meetings. I want to help you with that for next time. I think it's important that we are getting everybody involved. And so that was the primary reason that I voted against it. But it goes with what you had said, colleague, about the input. But one of the factors that's in the comp plan is this idea of doing a comprehensive rezoning each year, sort of compiling all of the interests of, that might be submitted by owners or developers, lawyers. And I need to figure out if this has been resolved because this, it hasn't, okay. So this is, this issue came up with my Keswick Road bill where if all of these other pieces are, are change or mistakes, right? Putting them all in a comprehensive bill may not work. So I'm, or mine, I said it was kind of comprehensive because first of all, it came from me. It wasn't, it didn't come from developers. And also that it was more than one property, it was several properties. But the Law Department said, no, it was, it was a mistake. I mean, it was a mistake in the code, I think. But I went, you know what I mean? So have we resolved that issue? Like, I can't even move forward with my bill until we resolve this issue.
Yes, I share some of your frustrations. One of the benefits to our process to date has been that unlike most jurisdictions, we do resentings on the fly. The burden is, every other jurisdiction does it on a X number of years, whether it's six or eight years, and by default, it is comprehensive. So the point of trying to get to an annual effort was to get some of that benefit of a comprehensive cycle. I've had several meetings and conversations and I'll start this with, I'm not a lawyer, this is not advice. But I'm working with Law Department and other colleagues to try and figure out exactly what the standards need to be to make sure that this is going to be judged under the comprehensive standards, which you ran into most recently in your bill. Because if the concern is that it needs to be an entire sector of a city or even as small as just a neighborhood that is in-depth studied as opposed to we're taking the applications without needing to look for the inverse of confirming what needs to necessarily stay the same. If that doesn't qualify for a comprehensive rezoning set of findings, then that forces it to a piecemeal. And the concern then is, well, there would be no tactical advantage for an applicant to be tied to everybody else. They would probably prefer to keep with the process that we have today and have their own bill despite the fact that it's more cost, but they could at least manage it on their own. So I need to get input in one direction or another to figure out, can we be sure that if we do the process in this way, it will fall under the comprehensive rezoning set of findings? Because that takes a change of mistake problem off the table. So that's, that's where we are right now.
Well, I guess my question also is a follow-up is, you know, this was a big deal in the comprehensive planning thinking. And so it must be extremely frustrating for you, as it is for me, that that is pretty much going to fall apart if we, if the Law Department is not going to rule in that favor and it all came because of my bill. So how, I mean, I guess we just end up going back to the old way of doing things if they don't, you know what I mean?
I'm not giving up yet. I have spent my twenty-five year career so far trying to push us to standard planning practice if it kills me. And this is an important feature that I want for us to have.
Do we have to change the code or do we have to go to the state? Like, what is the issue? I mean, I, well, go ahead.
Yeah, that's the input that I need. I just need a clear answer of what do we need to do to get what we're aiming for? And I just don't have that consensus and advice yet, so I just need a bit more time to sort that out. But the intent is, I'm not giving up yet.
Can someone respond to, to the piece that was highlighted from the Councilwoman about the immigrant Latino population? I need a response.
Sarah might be able to talk about the comp plan as a whole. I do, I remember being in discussions about it, but I-
Was this piece left out completely? Or, you know, you have some defense for what the- the councilwoman just said, her reasons for not supporting the Comprehensive Plan, and that was specific?
Yeah, uh, we did do outreach, um, to, uh, to immigrant communities, including the Latino community. I think the councilwoman was looking for even more outreach.
Specifically around the land use plan, specifically, yeah.
But yeah, we, we absolutely did. And that was, that was outlined and detailed as part of those hearings.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was added and that clarification.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just continue the conversation with Mr. Tissot offline, because this is a, a major source of frustration for everything to move forward, frankly. Like, it's a big deal. Uh, thank you.
And now we have Councilwoman Blatter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I want to point out by both kind of uplifting my colleague from the Eighth District's observation about the challenge with knowing when a community association leadership is representing the community and whatnot, and, and Director, I am like actually kind of fascinated by your point about how DC has the Advisory Neighborhood Council. Um, and, and that is something that has been, I'm gonna be thinking about for a while. I think it's a really, really interesting idea of what something could possibly look like here, like that. Um, the, keeping with the, the goal of the annual, um, the annual rezoning effort, I don't know if that, if we're calling it annual comprehensive or whatever this process. Yeah, my colleague from the Fourteenth might have just killed it, but, um, but the, yeah, I guess, I guess I'm curious. So there's the, this legal question about, is it, assuming, I guess, assuming that it passes this legal test of, of comprehensiveness, um, what's the, like, what's the next steps? And do we expect to do this process for the first time in the summer of twenty-six?
Yeah, so the, we need to have some certainty that the process that we adopt can be fairly, uh, measured under the required findings for a comprehensive rezoning, because that, again, takes a change in mistake off the table. That's a much harder standard to find, okay? Um, again, the benefit and burden of us doing rezoning on the fly is, up to this point, anybody can put in at any time for a rezoning. It's very convenient in that way, but the standards of findings in almost all cases are more difficult, because, um, it's less common to find something that is truly, uh, a major change. It does happen. Uh, I think there have been since twenty-seventeen, I could probably count on one, if not both hands, how many actual mistakes. And whenever we have one of those, I go through, um, it was a five-year process on paper, but it was actually a little bit longer than that from our in-house. And there are times where I can find the, the paper trail of, this is the point where an administrative mistake was made. Those are fine. Um, the challenge is when somebody buys a property because the price is good, they find out, oops, the zoning won't allow for what I want to do. What zone do I need? Let's go get some of that. And then we ask the question, what has changed? Where was a mistake? Otherwise, you're gonna have a challenge proving that. So this is why we want to get to the comprehensive set of findings, which is less onerous. But I need to make sure that the process that we adopt will allow us to use that set of findings, or we're gonna have difficulty.
Yeah.
Hopefully that answered the question.
And, yeah, with it, the reason that I think this is such an, an important idea, besides as a council member who's been put between, in my short time in office, put between a rock and a hard place on a couple of neighborhood versus developer decisions already, um, which I don't like, and would prefer, would prefer someone else to be in that position. Um, the, the other thing that I, I think is a, a problem economically is this idea of you, the property owner of a large parcel or an old warehouse or whatever, is, do I base what I think I can get off of the, the current zone, like what the property's currently zoned? Well, that's not what my commercial realtor is gonna tell me. They're gonna tell me it's gonna get rezoned, and so it can be this, which may or may not be realistic. But then you also have, you know, members of the development community who actually want to buy low, you know, pressure for the redevelopment, then redevelop, like, and so this, this unpredictability around the, a zoning outcome of a particular parcel is actually, as opposed as a huge, like, political and economic problem. And so I don't exactly know if the proposed, this proposed solution, like, actually solves it, but I, I really appreciate.
Sure. So, um, a couple factors bearing on that, that problem. Um, we now have a general land use map. Uh, unlike all the other jurisdictions in the state, we finally got one as part of a comprehensive plan. That helps, uh, set the, the trend and direction for our neighborhoods, uh, for the future, because up until this point in time, that major question in the long list of findings for rezoning of what does a comprehensive master plan for your jurisdiction say? We couldn't answer it. Now we have an answer. Um, secondly, the difference, again, with us is because we don't do a comprehensive citywide rezoning every six or eight years, for the counties that have that, it sets, uh, the zoning map, and that gives you that period of time where you know there's not gonna be changes, right? That's the certainty. Because we've had these, uh, rezonings on the fly for generations now, um, there has been a default of falling into, well, zoning is much more mutable than we think. And as time goes on, we get challenged more and more frequently, so we have to more and more carefully do our homework to make sure we adhere to state law requirements and local law requirements. And so that's why we're now trying to fix the system to align it with what we really should be doing instead of just making it work. And I think once we get that solution, it'll be more predictable in the long run, but we have to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Tissot. And then, uh, lastly, a, a comment, and this is probably more for Deputy Mayor Williams, um, or maybe for Director Ryer's replacement. But, um, State Center, uh, I, twenty-two acres of soon-to-be-completely vacant, uh, unoccupied, brutalist office buildings and vacant surface parking lots that the state, you know, I'm tracking the state is gonna continue to, to maintain ownership of, and it is, uh, is both a huge opportunity and just what a, a huge potential waste if ten years from now, it's exactly what it is now. Um, I mean, it's, it's a massive, it's a massive property in the very middle of the, um, not in the middle of downtown, but on the north end of downtown. So I know, I know that, you know, y'all are involved in those conversations, and I appreciate it, and I've, I like what y'all are advocating for, and I just think we have to continue to, to, to push the state on this as a, as a important priority. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, just a reminder alert, we're, at this point, we're down to fifteen minutes, and so, um, let's try to keep our questions moving, and that now we're with, uh, the Councilman of the First District, Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, friends from the Department of Planning. Um, congratulations on your retirement, Director Ryer. We will miss you, although we know that you'll be active and engaged all around the city in whatever kind of trouble you can get up to. So I look forward to being part of it. I'm really glad to have you all here, uh, to, and mindful of the Vice President's direction. Uh, two questions. One, I want to give deep appreciation to Ms. Richardson and the, uh, the Sustainability Office. Um, I had a chance to start working with your predecessors during the pandemic, when, uh, that office really stepped up in massive ways, uh, as well as all the Department of Planning to help us figure out what to do in this completely unprecedented position, and, and that office has continued to be a place where really innovative and creative, uh, ideas, programs, concepts are, are coming out and, and being implemented around the city. And so I'm really grateful for your work, and, um, especially on our part for the Resiliency Hub program, um, that we've been a part of since, since those early days, um, and continue to do that work. Um, and as a recipient of, of, uh, of the food, emergency food supplies, or the, uh, the food boxes, the produce boxes. Um, Director Ryer, you mentioned, and, and maybe you want to follow up on this too, um, just the challenges both of the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Plan of, of just what it, uh, what it looks like to, to implement those. So the two, the two targets are the two, um, performance measures there, right? Percent of the CAP, Recommissions Complete or Progress Annually, percent of the Sustainability Plan Strategies Initiated or Advanced Annually. The target goals there are ten percent for climate, five percent for, um, sustainability. I would point out that the, that the actuals have been substantially higher than that, which is really encouraging. Uh, you know, nine to fourteen percent on sustainability. Um, there's some missing years there, uh, but, uh, thirty-one percent in fiscal twenty-four. I'm curious what this year has looked like, recognizing there's barriers. So I'm curious on both for climate and sustainability, what the, how we're doing against those measures, and also, uh, Director Richardson, would you speak to a success in either one of those, like, like an implementation that, that, that really went well and has, has, has really pushed things forward? And maybe identify one barrier as well that, that's been frustrating?
Well, I, I just want to start by saying thank you again for, um, acknowledging the work and, um, the tenure of the Office of Sustainability in the Food Policy and Planning Division, uh, um, and appreciating, uh, that work, and like, like you said, the predecessors that have come before. Um, when it comes to our measures as, uh,
Just your name again for the record.
My apology. Ava Richardson, Director of the Office of Sustainability. Um, as the direct, as Director Ryer alluded to, um, when we look at our Sustainability Plan and our Climate Action Plan and how we report progress on an annual basis, we're looking at, um, the more than probably between those two plans, um, three hundred different measures on a five-point scale. So looking at it from, um, kind of like, um, not started to complete it and ongoing. And completed and ongoing means it's implemented and we're continuing to maintain and sustain that. Uh, generally, we provide updates on the progress in our annual sustainability report, and, um, we typically do that through datas and stories. So we do break down specific stories, um, and some of the ones that we've highlighted in the past few years, um, include a seven-point-three-million-dollar FEMA grant to install solar and battery backup from, uh, yeah, uh, for our community resiliency hubs. We also typically work very closely with our partners, um, and our colleagues in the Food Policy and Planning Division to highlight some of their amazing work that they're doing, both with the food boxes, as well as, um, things like, um, um, online SNAP, um, and their amazing work. Um, and then in addition to that, uh, we work with agencies across the city, including the Department of Public Works, to support and pilot new zero-waste and food waste reduction initiatives, and so continuing to maintain food scrap drop-off locations across the city and expand, um, those programs. And also, um, more and more working, um, with our DPW colleagues to support, um, uh, new ways to help and encourage behavior change and do more strategic, excuse me, strategic communications around climate mitigation and adaptation. Um, so year over year, when it comes to the progress that we're making, as you highlighted, we do typically overshoot those targets that we have of a ten percent or, uh, uh, between a five and ten percent, um, level of progress. Um, I would say the, the challenge oftentimes is making sure that we are just capturing and really highlighting all the amazing work that our colleagues are doing. Sometimes, um, there is progress, but we, we really have to work strategically, um, to reach out to DOT and reach out to, um, DGS and, and Public Works to make sure that we're reflecting that in the plan and that we, um, adequately, um, capture that progress. Um, and then, um, funding is always, um, the biggest issue and challenge when it comes to, um, ensuring that we can secure adequate grants or other, um, um, sources of funding, uh, to pursue some of these more ambitious things that won't typically be reflected in a, in a, uh, capital or operating budget.
Great. All right. So that's, I really appreciate all that, Director Richardson. One specific barrier you've run up to in the last year, one specific, um, whether climate or sustainability, where we advanced maybe to that ongoing level and, and feel really good about getting there?
Yeah, definitely. And, and so when it comes to, I think, how we measure progress, um, we have a carbon neutrality goal that really aims to reduce emissions, um, one-hundred percent, or be carbon neutral by twenty-forty-five. And I think while, um, we can all appreciate, like, what that means in terms of reducing the emission of, uh, carbon dioxide and methane, um, what we've realized is that that is not the best way to communicate progress. And when it comes to the metrics that, like, really resonate with residents, as well as, um, really get people to support or get us to a point where we can help people support the behavior changes that we know we'll need to see both among our residents in the publics, in the public sector, but also in the private sector, those communication details are very different. So I would say really just becoming better climate communicators, um, to spark the change that we want to see among different target audiences and populations. And then I think oftentimes what we'll see in the private sector or from some of the big multinational corporations, they, they, again, do their market research and are able to really target, um, specific messaging to specific target audiences. Uh, we don't often have in the public sector the funding for, for that. So just being, um, a little bit more strategic and intentional about how we are supporting, um, certain types of messaging and what the behavior change kind of like science, uh, or approaches are to that messaging and those approaches. And, and I'm sorry, could you repeat the, uh, other part, because I, that you asked for? I just want to make sure I'm answering that.
Just, uh, a specific barrier and a specific, um, area of progress?
Yeah, yeah. Um, definitely, I would say overall, our engagement, um, year over year, we've increased our engagement, uh, I would say going back to twenty-twenty-one, we were at around forty-nine thousand unique interactions across the city, and our goal or our target for FY twenty-six is eighty thousand. So, um, we're, I think, on track to kind of like double the engagement that we've been able to accomplish in the years past. Um, and as Director Ryer mentioned, we are fully staffed as an office, um, and that has allowed us to really think more ambitiously about how we're pursuing the actions or the implementation of actions in our Sustainability Plan and our Climate Action Plan and our Disaster Preparedness Plan. Among those different plans, we probably have a total of six hundred different actions that we're pursuing progress on and working, um, um, uh, with a Sustainability Resiliency Sub-Cabinet on pursue, on implementing those goals as well. So I think that engagement, and then we have a newer, um, measure that looks specifically at engaging, um, our workforce across the city to support, um, climate literacy in really thinking about how do we, uh, foster a climate-ready, a climate-ready workforce across the city and what that looks like.
Thank you, Director Richardson. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, Jones of the Twelfth District.
I thank you all for, uh, your hard work and your support within the office and my, within your office. During my first few months, I've learned a lot about planning, a lot more than I thought I would, and, uh, just how nuanced and how it takes a certain level of expertise. So thank you for helping me understand that, um, which is kind of one of my questions. You mentioned earlier the, the new burden that now will exist under, in order to rezon something. Could you repeat that again? I guess it has to have been an era or something had to have changed?
Sure. So there's two general criteria that a rezoning request has to fit under. Um, the easier of the two is a comprehensive rezoning effort. So, uh, the easy example is several of our surrounding counties have a every-six-year or every-eight-year process. They open a, a county-wide application. They'll get, you know, pick a number, a hundred-some applications for rezoning. They look at the entirety of the jurisdiction's zoning map. They make decisions and change it, and then wait that six or eight years and do it again. Uh, we've not had that, uh, so we just do rezonings on the fly. So your constituent can reach out to you, ask for an individual bill for rezoning one or a few properties as they may need. That is what we call a piecemeal rezoning, because it's not part of a bigger comprehensive process. And so as you might imagine, there's a higher threshold of standards that they have to show, that it's not just what we call a spot zoning, which means I'm just picking a random zone out of the hat because it fits my goals better, it's more profitable to me. That's not planning, right? That's just maximizing your personal profits. The rules are designed to disincentivize that. You have to show as an individual, you know, piecemeal rezoning, that there was some kind of mistake that was made. And as I mentioned, I found a handful since the twenty-seventeen rezoning of the whole city, where I could step through all of the incremental approvals. There were multiple hearings, uh, and they just missed the line, or there was something that was a technical flaw. Um, and so those fall under that category. Uh, or if there was a significant change that happened that, in essence, invalidated the reason why it was zoned something in the first place. That's a high bar to me.
Mm-hmm. So mostly the time, it's gonna be because of a mistake, and I guess my, I just need clarification. What is considered a mistake? A mistake in, like, paperwork or a mistake in how it was originally zoned?
Sure. So I can, I can actually point one out to you, uh, at some point in time on City View, because there's one that's out there. I just need a piece of legislation to include it in. So, um, looking in southeast Baltimore, um, during the comprehensive rezoning, there was, um, an idea for the Canton Crossing area that would have been TOD zoned, and it went to C3 instead. There was a large listing of all the parcels in that area, except for one that didn't get changed. It's a little rectangular hyphen of TOD four, because it was a former streetbed that got closed. It didn't have an address. It just had a block lot, and they missed that in the list. That's the clearest example of an administrative mistake. They changed the whole area except for this little dash in the middle. Uh, so it's on my list to look at to fix once we sort out the process. Those kinds of, you know, oops, we missed one, or something just got changed and it shouldn't have been, are relatively uncommon. Uh, so typically, we will see applicants, uh, will try and demonstrate that there was some significant that there was some significant change in the neighborhood that leads to a more appropriate zone being beneficial for that property.
Yeah, I guess that's, for me, that's just a really, really tough burden, almost impossible burden in order to meet because it either has to be a paperwork change or someone, or the neighbor had to completely change or it had to been, like you said, an oops or someone clearly made an oops. And I think in order to have that approach, it's based upon a premise that the way things were set coming out of Transform Baltimore was completely correct. Like in order to, in order for, and I can't sit here and say, although I wouldn't, that the possibility of everything, the change that happened in 2017 but being perfect and this is the perfect document is flawed. Like that whole premises is flawed. So to think that, so the only way this works is if we look at it and say, the way it's zoned now, everything is perfect. And it's not. Like there's no such thing as a perfect document. So that's kind of what my, I guess, reluctance with this approach is on top of the fact that to date, we still don't have a date in which we're going to have comprehensive rezoning. So one, we can't do the piecemeal, but also there is no comprehensive rezoning date. And also the burden of proof is way too high. We've now created a situation in which no rezoning can possibly happen right now. Which is, which is the, which is when I talk to residents and they want certain changes, I can't even give them an option right now. It's just like, no, nothing can happen. Whether it's, whether you think it's right, whether you think it's wrong, it's-- and that this is the burden. So I'll just channel like, what is, at least if I had a date of when we'll do comprehensive rezoning, I can give people some kind of hope. But right now, it just seems like the whole option of rezoning is off the table. And to be honest, when people talk about rezoning, they say, go to your councilperson. That is the only way to kind of get it done. And then it makes me look like I'm unable to do my job.
Yep. It's a tough situation. And in decades past, where we weren't challenged a whole lot, it got done, right? So now that, I think it's almost a problem of our residents are more educated on the process. They understand the standards. And when they disagree with something, they know what to do about it. So we do need a solution. We're definitely working towards that. And as soon as I have information, we'll let you know.
All right, yeah. I would just say, let's, if we can put some legs on this thing, because I'm feeling pressure. So I hope you all feel this pressure as well, especially as a new councilperson who like get a bunch of requests and it makes it look like I can't do anything that my predecessor was able to do. And it's only because of the system and not necessarily because of me. All right. Secondly, the other thing I kind of need your help on is like these smoke shops opening up. And I'm not sure if it's much of a zoning issue or what it is. And I'm talking to planning, trying to figure out what can we do? I know because of Transform Baltimore, there's like a loophole in place where, you know, these corner stores can also sell tobacco products if they currently had a permit. And I think there's a loophole that a lot of neighborhoods are being taken advantage of because now you have smoke shops in middle residential neighborhoods open up till midnight. And you have cars double park, parking up, jumping in the middle of the night. And show me a different name. There's nothing residents, neighbors or anything can do about it because technically, because of their zoning laws and the way it was rezoned, they're able to do it and able to open up. And like 90% of what they sell are tobacco products. And technically, that doesn't have a space in a residential neighborhood. So is there thoughts with the planning department and like rezoning, how we can close this loophole up to protect our neighborhoods from having smoke shops in the middle of a block?
Sure. I'd be curious to know some examples, if you could share that with us. So as part of our overhaul of zoning code with Transform Baltimore, we recognize that there was a challenge of a lot of residential properties, your typical corner store and especially row home neighborhoods, that had the stigma of non-conformity because they were from decades past, commercial, the structure, it has no windows, it has a chamfered corner, it's a commercial structure, right? So we created the neighborhood commercial establishment to give them a limited palette of uses that would allow it to not be a non-conforming use, but instead to be a conditional use. Still has a public input through a public hearing and so forth. But one of the stipulations is they're not allowed to sell tobacco products. So if those locations are neighborhood commercial establishment and they're violating that, that would be a potential zoning enforcement issue. If they're commercially zoned, then we wouldn't have a zoning answer for that. We'd need to look into another form of attack for that. But I'd be curious to have some examples, if you wouldn't mind sharing those at your convenes?
Yeah, I definitely will look forward to working with you on that. And if we can tackle that, because I've been looking at it with your team on what can be done. And sometimes like really, it's not much. But if we can lean into that, I'll work with you on that. I appreciate, like I said, the work you do. I actually rely on you all because you are the subject matter experts. And any frustration I get is because I'm getting frustration from my constituents. But I just need your help on figuring out solutions. That's all, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. So now we're officially over schedule. I know that Councilwoman Ramos has one more question. And then we're going to have CHAPs come in and also the Chair of the Committee, Chairwoman McCray will be taking over. And just want to give up, before we do anything, she had to step away because of an opening of a new elementary, new 21st century elementary school in her district. And progress like that is what we want to continue with our kids. So congratulations to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to talk a little bit very quickly. We might have to take this offline. As we understand that the permit office is a total disaster, my understanding that one factor in this disastrous disaster is that the system isn't getting the permit reviews for planning in the proper way to you all. Is that what's happening? How, what is planning's role in helping to address this challenge that we're facing here?
Yeah, good question. Eric and Ivor Quashy have been like on the front line on this, trying to understand where things are going wrong. I think, I mean, I can give you two or three examples of very different types of things going wrong. One example would be permits are assigned to the wrong person. That's a basic issue. Some of them even people that aren't reviewing permits in that department, other people entirely different role. Another example would be some of our, a lot of our permits are geographically based. So a floodplain, right, is a map. A CHAP local district is based on a map. And there are errors in the mapping systems. I think, I think what I say sort of higher level comments or questions we're working with HCD on is the manner where specific permits are assigned to specific people, which is a rigid system. When somebody is out or when a mistake is made, it's very time-consuming to rectify it. So I think what we want to work with HCD and it is sort of a cluster approach. For example, all sustainability permits would have Ava on that list. All land use permits would have Eric on that list. So that if somebody's on vacation or out sick or whatever, that somebody else can see it. Because a lot of the issues are that permits are coming in and whoever's supposed to review it doesn't know it. And we don't find out until somebody calls up and complains and says, where's my permit? It's been sitting for 30 days. So if we had more eyes on each permit, I think particularly a backup eye or a supervisor eye, that that structural change, which I think we're negotiating with the vendor, would start to help that.
Thank you. Yeah, I would have hoped that that would have happened by now. I would have hoped that as part of the second phase of reform, of second reform, that, well, the first reform, that that would have happened. So it's clear to me that all of the workflows were never thought through in order to make that happen. But I'm glad that you're going to be involved in the next step. So, yeah. And I think just on the zoning code thing, I actually think it's a little bit more flexible than what my colleague is talking about. But I think it's more about how you take a look at it. But we'll figure it out. Yes. Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. We're going to get into the CHAP hearing. And it's Mr. Holcomb?
Yep. Do you want to? Yeah. I mean, you can stay in your seat if you want, Eric. Are we going to go?
Yeah, well, we did presentations. Did CHAP have a presentation or?
The presentation was given as to--
Earlier, okay.
As part of the planning department.
Then yes, definitely stay in your seat.
Yeah. If you like us, we could review it again or I could just review sort of the numbers here or I could open it up for questions.
We're going to go straight to questions. If you've already did the presentation, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for CHAP? Okay, I see Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess just a general question. Have you increased, I guess, your staff as far as communities abiding by CHAP rules? Areas like Park Circle, Ashburton? We have, you know, developers that come in and do rehabs and rehab situations. And if the community association doesn't have certain people signed as watchdogs for these kind of things and they've already completed the work and it's really becoming a problem, have you, is there an update on how you're helping to work through that?
The way that Article 6 is written is that HCD enforces the CHAP code. So we rely on the code enforcement of HCD. And we have created, I think, a very good relationship with them. I mean, to the point now where we can, I can send an email in the morning and there will be an inspector out there to inspect the property in the afternoon. So that's part of it. The second part of it is no matter what kind of enforcement activity there are, whether it's a stop work notice, a violation or a citation given, sometimes we can get it rectified in 24 hours. Sometimes it will take 24 months. And it's all depending on how the property owner works with us. So that's part of it. But the second part that I think you were talking about is our relationship, I mean, the CHAP staff's relationship to the community associations. And we ask that in every local historic district, that community create an architecture review committee or a CHAP liaison, somebody where the CHAP staff who manages the design review in that district can talk to, sometimes on a daily basis, but can have a very good relationship working with each other. And through that, you know, I would say some of our local historic districts, we get a list, Monday morning, we get a list of projects that people did over the weekend. And we would work with Chantel from HCD to do the code enforcement with that and have them work and become part of, to abide by the CHAP guidelines. So that's one thing that we do. We have also made a, we're fully staffed now. So we're working on to make sure that each staff has one or two, maybe even three, depending on the community, what I call walk and talks in the neighborhood, where you go out there with the community leaders and you walk around and you point at problems and things and you talk those things. You come back with a list of problem properties and you work on them. So there's that type of communication. So, yeah, we're working on that thing. We also try to make sure that we go to one or two of those community association meetings at least a year. So those are some of the things that we're working on.
Thank you. I also want to thank you. I've seen you firsthand, your process and the way you work for associations that are interested in being, you know, a CHAP's member. Just the detailed work that you give and the attention, example, Weinhurst and, you know, other communities. So any association out there that's interested in being a part of CHAPs, they, you do a good job with that. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Eric. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I wanted to speak a little bit about when folks have a CHAP tax credit and the property transfers in the middle of that tenure timeframe. I'm curious, what's the protocol in terms of, from the city side, in terms of information that's shared with the new owner or not when a deed is recorded as for sale? And then is there also a communication protocol at the end of the time of the tenure period where notification is sent saying, thank you for participating? You'll notice that your taxes are going to be impacted. I'm just, this came about, we had one particular situation, but I'm sure it's not the only one, where, you know, it was the middle of the pandemic when the transfer took place. I don't know if that impacted things. I don't know if the burden of information sharing on the part of the seller and real estate agents did what-- so I'm just asking for CHAP or for the city overall, I know finance is involved. At a point of transfer and at the end, what are the current communication protocols?
From CHAP, there is no rules or procedures for us to, you know, when a property sells, we don't send out a new letter to the new property saying that you have this tax credit. We are asked many, many times to provide information, oh, I'm selling my property or I just bought a property and they say they have a CHAP credit. Do I have a CHAP credit? And we will, of course, we'll work with them and we get them that information. At the end of the tax credit, the information will be on the tax bill and the information's at the beginning and at the end. So we don't tell somebody that their tax credit is about to end. That's an interesting idea, though. But that would really take a lot of time and manpower to do that. But that's something to think about.
I appreciate that. So just to clarify, at the end, the bill is the notification. And when your bill, you know, the CHAP credit goes away and, you know, you should be paying attention to your bill because that's an important piece of mail that comes in and that's the current notification. And then at transfer, you all regularly answer questions about interested parties, both on the buyer, do buyers, do sellers ever say, hey, can you, can you put together a formal piece of paper saying that 70 years are left so I can hand it to the buyer?
And both and everyone. You know, a lot of title companies really make sure that, you know, once they have it, they want to have a document, you know? They want to have that final certification letter, which has the date that it was final certified and the date in 10 years afterwards from that of when that credit will go away. So they want that letter and we give that letter to them.
Right. No, I really appreciate that. And that seems, that seems appropriate. I mean, not that we couldn't do more necessarily, but that seems appropriate. Yeah, this particular situation, a letter was given, but it was-- I'll just show it to you.
Yeah, we could, we could talk offline because there have, just to be totally honest, there have been a couple of fraudulent letters out there.
I mean, this letter does not look like what you described, so.
So and of course, you know, we work with our partners, the finance department. We have a very good relationship with them. And, you know, they, well, to put it bluntly, I think they take the harder issues of stuff like, you know, well, this letter is fraudulent, what should we do? And we talk about it and work that way.
Thank you, Director Holcomb. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Gray?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question about some metrics for the fiscal year '24. The number of preliminary reviews completed for tax credit applications within 30 days and the percentage of completed authorization to proceed applications within two business days seem pretty low. Can you tell us what you are all doing to try and improve this performance?
To be, well, we have become fully staffed. These numbers were down because we were down. We had two senior staff people leave several, a couple of months from each other. And then a year later, we had another senior staff person work. Now we're fully staffed and we, our numbers are looking really good for 2025. I mean, I'm going to brag here. So for the tax credit performance measurement, we are at 82%. So for the tax credit performance measurement, we are at 82% meeting the target. And we're at 76% meeting the target for the authorization to proceeds.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't see the increased capacity for the Conservation District work in the budget this year. Is that, I know we said in the bill that we would, we have to wait another year. But I would have thought that you would have tried to get some capacity this year to try to work on the process and everything before the bill passes.
We do, we asked for an enhancement, but that was not given.
Oh, okay. So you did ask for it. And it was, how many staff did you ask for?
Just one.
Just one?
Right. I think right now we have probably capacity, once next year comes along and we start working with the communities, we probably have capacity to set up one, two or three conservation districts and run the design review for them. And after that, we're going to, we're going to need new staff. So I think we're probably two years out before we need essentially another staff person.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll also, I've talked with Director Ry or two about the idea of how can we get like the community planners to help out with some of this stuff, too?
Yeah, they're going to have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the councilman has a neighborhood is ready to go. I've got a neighborhood ready to go. They're our pilot neighborhood. So we'll, so you don't anticipate asking for staff quite yet in terms of, we want to get the system down first and then see how much capacity you're going to need?
We'll ask for it for next budget season.
Yeah.
We'll push for next budget season, yeah.
Oh, you will? Okay, okay.
I mean, we did for this one, too, but we weren't.
Yes. Well, that is something that I think the councilman and I will work on. So.
Thank you.
And then you are also retiring, correct?
In a few weeks, hopefully.
Oh, my gosh. Well, thank you very much for your service to the city.
Thank you. 31 years.
31 years. Wow. You've seen a lot and been through a lot, I'm sure. So I just want to, yeah, I mean, this is, this whole thing was your baby and you've been really amazing in terms of working with all of us and explaining everything. And we're just so grateful for your service to the city.
Yeah, I mean, working with you all has been a pleasure.
Well, every once in a while, I'm sure it isn't. But I'm so glad that you've been, you've definitely been very patient with us. So I very much appreciate it and thank you so much. Well deserved. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is regarding to like the timeline as far as how long does it usually take for when someone submits an application for it to be approved typically? And then how long, once it's approved, for it to typically become into effect for the tax credit?
For, so you're talking about the application for the tax credit?
Yeah, when someone submits an application for the tax credit, how long does it take from when they submit it to they, till they get approval? And then I guess there's also a timeline from when it's approved to when the tax credit actually takes effect?
Right, okay. Yeah, a lot of different scenarios. So, you know, we, we try to make sure that once we receive an application, we review it for completeness. And then we want, and we want to make sure that's reviewed and approved within 30 calendar, 30 business days. Now, if we can approve it because it doesn't meet our guidelines, we'll pick up the phone and say, listen, this doesn't work right here. It doesn't meet our guidelines. Can you do this? I mean, we'll work it over the phone. So all of a sudden, we can approve it as quickly as possible. Once it's approved for, for, once they have preliminary approval, they go and they do the work. And when they're 98% done, they usually come back to us. They get the punch lists out there. They usually come back to us for final certification. And that takes another, you know, I'd say 30 days, too. We usually get that done pretty quickly. And it also depends on, you know, is that application complete? Is all the work meet our guidelines? Is it a complicated project? So all those things move in. But once that happens, we could do final certification within 30 days. They also have to have an appraisal with them, too. And that takes some time. And that appraisal is looked at, not by the CHAP staff, but by finance. Thank goodness, because they're the smart ones with the numbers. But once that's all done, then we could get out our final certification letter very quickly. And then there are some rules of when that will kick in. So that's, that's another question. It's usually July 1 of that next year it kicks in.
Got you. And the reason why I ask is I've heard feedback that sometimes it could be a lengthy process in which someone could, you know, submit their application in like year '25, may not get final approval till '26 sometime. And then the tax credit doesn't kick in until '27, right? And where like these tax credits can have big impacts on development projects and, you know, if they're, if they can have some kind of better idea of how long it would take, it would encourage people to, you know, may want to invest more and do more. So I guess my question is, has there ever been thought of, of moving the timeline to, like, let's say, whenever they get approval, that it'll be, it'll take an effect, the tax credit, the following year, the following tax year after you all approve it? So that no matter, the beginning of the year, so that no matter when it's approved, they know that the beginning of that next year, that next calendar or tax year, that it'll, it'll kick in retroactively for the entire year. That way they can have an idea of what the finances will look like.
I, you want to do an answer to that? Sure.
Hello, Lauren Shizik with CHAP. I really appreciate the question. And this is where, it's always tricky because the purpose of the CHAP tax credit is to sort of offset the increase in property taxes that come when someone invests a significant amount of money in their property. And so for the CHAP tax credit process, there's both a pre-rehab and post-rehab appraisal. The thing that gets a little tricky in this is that there's, that then also triggers, triggers a reassessment by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. And so typically, with the review process, it can sometimes happen where our appraisal, the project is done and the appraisal is completed, but the state assessment doesn't increase for a year. And so then there's no, no increase in, you know, tax credit, no increase in tax credit occurred. But then we have to, you know, the Department of Finance has to give something. So they give a credit of like one cent or something. And so, you know, it's a little tricky in terms of that timeline because we do, it does come into play. For the projects where, just because of the complication of timing and when final certification comes in and then is applied to a project, if a project is a really complicated project, and this is where we see the projects that are like over 3.5 mil or 5 mil, where it maybe is a three to four year project, it is within that three year, depending on when the assessment, the state, state assessment is done, their property taxes can increase during the project. And then they see an increase and they're like, wait, but I have the credit. And then once they finish our tax credit project, they will then get the tax credits. It's just maybe, you know, it'll, it'll still be 10 years, but it's maybe not the first year after they finish the project. It's years two through 11. So they still get the benefit of it. Arguably, they may even get more of a benefit because the property will be higher. So they get more of a credit. So it's, it's just, it's a little tricky just between the city process and then the state assessment process not being fully lined up.
Exactly. And I would expect that if you ask a lot of those investors, especially the larger project, they would rather have it on the front end. And then we could, as a city, get more money quicker, you know, on the back end because the credit will run out sooner and we could start collecting that higher property tax rate much sooner. I mean, if, if there is a way where we could kick it in sooner, like, because if it's approved already, like, why can't we just like start it that way? They don't deal with the uncertainty of knowing when, when, what tax year will kick in. Or where, if in writing, we had it so that the following year after your application was approved is when it'll kick in, no matter when the state kind of does their thing. It all happens retroactively.
Yeah. And I think if you have any specific projects, I think we would love, love to talk about those specific projects because I really do believe that that is, that is generally going to be a problem when projects take more than two years. Our tax credit, you know, approval period is two years. People can then apply for a two-year extension. But if work is done within the two-year timeframe, that does not, that usually doesn't, that usually doesn't overlap with a reassessment by the state. So, yeah.
No, I appreciate, just something else, one if you thought about. I appreciate that.
And one of the things I was thinking, listening to Lauren, is that there is the mayor's tax credit review committee that's going on now. And if you and I would like to talk offline about this issue and craft, you know, a really good thing, we can get that to finance so they can understand that and give that to the committee.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I think briefly, I just wanted to echo that.
It was part of the tax credit work. Actually, for the record, Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor, Councilman, this issue's been on my mind in my prior life as a private practice attorney. And then more recently now, there's projects I'm aware of, a couple in Councilman Blanchard's district that have had the same issue. And it's difficult when they're doing lease up and they have literally no cash flow and they're hit with a tax bill that's huge. And so even with common sense prevailing amongst even the staff, it's been the issue of the statute being drafted poorly. So my vision was as part of the full work that we're doing with the tax credit work group, we'd revise all the tax credits to be similarly aligned so it's incentivizing the right thing. It's been slower than I wanted to. The tax credit work to proceed. But I think I've heard there was movement amongst yourselves to put legislation in, which I'm happy to keep working with you all, whoever's leading that effort. Because it's been difficult for some property owners like right now. I know they have trouble paying the tax bill.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your response. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you to Mr. Holcomb. We appreciate your 31 years of service and have fun in retirement.
I will. I'll send a postcard. I'm staying in Baltimore, but I'll send it from the-
Okay, please do.
Washington Monument or something.
Okay, so we're going to be back in a few minutes with the mayor's Office of Employment Development. Thank you to Plannin as well and your entire team for joining us today.